All right, good morning. We'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Workshop. Madam Clerk, if we could go ahead and call the roll whenever you return.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Commissioner McAlhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunley?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Can I move, we excuse Commissioner White, please?
Second.
It has been moved improperly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Commissioner McAlhorn? Commissioner Dunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. At this time, if we could please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let me pray, eternal God, we come first of all to give you thanks. We thank you for this day, thank you for our life, health, and strength. We ask now that you come into this meeting and guide and direct us as we make the decisions for the citizens of Pitt County. As all these blessed in the holy name we pray. Amen.
Case of light, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approval of the agenda.
Second.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McAlhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we could turn the meeting over to the adjutant.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. Just very briefly, our purpose this morning is to discuss American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have a short window of time to get a good amount of work done. This morning, we're going to start with Brian Burnett running through a series of slides to make sure we all have the same information, the same understanding about how these funds can be utilized, and that we're all on the same page there. And then, we're going to try and turn this into more of an interactive session where we'll have a worksheet where we can create buckets of funds and place projects within those buckets. Ultimately, by the end of today, I think our ultimate goal would be to approve a revenue loss methodology. Brian will tell you what that all means and what that's about. And then, secondly, if we have a spreadsheet at the end of our session for the board to approve that, to give us our marching orders and instructions going forward as we begin to further explore and spend some of our ARPA funds. With that, I turn it over, Mr. Chairman, to Brian Burnett.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. So, we're going to kind of, I know we have some time constraints this morning, so we're going to kind of move through this. Just like any of our other workshops, if you have a question as we move along, please ask. We will try to answer this. The majority of this will be myself, but there's a part here where some of the other senior leadership team members will jump in and present some of the topics. So, to get started off today, we just want to make sure, can you not hear me?
It doesn't sound like it's on.
I can try to talk louder, but I don't, I think it's on, but I'll, I'll try to project. So, what we're going to try to accomplish today, we're going to ensure that everybody still understands ARPA funding. We're going to try to align our spending with our existing goals and priorities that you all go over with our budget and our CIP. We're going to look at feedback in terms of the call centers that we had established prior to the fall pause on ARPA. We're going to talk about putting the money into what I like to call buckets, and then also, if there's going to be a process that you all want to receive requests, we want to try to figure that out. We want to try to walk out of here with some dollar amount set, or at least some percentages of how we want to spend our money. And then, finally, you will have to approve by requirement of the Department of Treasury, the public revenue loss method that we are going to use for our funding. And I'm going to go into more detail about that before it's time for you to discuss that. So, just to give you where we are, you all know we got our first half of our money last May, and we'll get our second half this May. In total, that's $35,107,014. As of February the 9th, we had spent $1,703,408. This has only been spent on the premium pay that you all approved back in September and for our COVID-19 vaccine incentive policy. We did set money aside for the incentives, and we did set money aside to pay for the time the employees spend going testing. So, so far, all the money that we've spent so far, the $1.7 million, has been internal for employees. We went through a round of public input. We had five in-person, five virtual, we had an online survey. And even last week, I was still receiving direct responses from the community of ideas of how we could spend this money. And I think until we set something, we probably will keep receiving those, which is great. And then, one of the things that we'd always talked about through this whole process was the Treasury had not, at that time, determined the final rule of how to spend. On January 7th, they did publish their final rule, so we no longer are under the interim rule. Any decision that we made according to the interim rule, they will respect. So, the premium pay and the vaccine policy fell within the interim rule, so we're still good with the final rule that came out from Treasury. These are our eligible expenses. For the most part, none of this has changed throughout this whole process. We can address public health, the economic input, the lost public revenue, premium pay, and then with infrastructure, primarily water, sewer, and broadband. For the most part, all of that stayed the same that we've already covered. Compliance, I'd just like to hit on this, just so everybody knows that this is all federal money coming through the county, so every penny that we spend or that we give out has to meet all the compliance requirements. So, if we give money to somebody, they essentially have to follow the same guidelines and policies that we would have to follow if we were spending the money ourselves. We need to make sure everything is documented, that there's a need for it. We should not be just creating just for the fact of spending. And one of the things that we probably never really talked about, but this is typical for grants involving the federal government, we probably do need to put something in, some type of document together when we do give money out, to make sure that we have a clawback process in place in case we find that anybody that we give money to is not meeting the requirements that we lay out or that the federal government has laid out. So, the major update, or the final rule, involves the lost public revenue eligibility. The federal government realized that some local governments did lose money due to the pandemic, and at the time, they had created a calculation for us to plug in, looking at our growth of revenue prior to the pandemic, in our case, was this year 2019, to where we are today. And the federal government had a set percentage. So, actually, just in a nutshell, I would have to run a calculation from 2016 to 2019 to determine our revenue growth, and then compare that percentage to the set percentage set by the federal government. Whichever number was higher was the number that we could use. And then, we could take our most recent audits and determine if our revenue had grown at that particular rate. They put this together during the interim rule, and they heard a lot of feedback from a lot of the local governments, that it was a very complex and complicated process. Even the school of government doesn't have a set methodology of how to use the calculator. And so, the federal government decided that local governments could basically have the option of running the calculator and determining what your lost revenue growth amount would be, or you could have a standard deduction up to $10 million of your ARPA funding that you could use as replacement lost revenue. Now, you don't have to go all the way up to $10 million, but ultimately, what the federal government has decided with the final rule is that if you determine the standard deduction amount versus the calculation amount, that you can take that money and you can spend it on anything local government service related. So, anything that we normally would spend money on is now eligible, with the exception of debt payments. We cannot put this money in fund balance, and we cannot make pension payments. So, we don't have to spend all of it today. We still have until December of 2024, but by April 1st, we do have to send off to the federal government which method that we're going to use, whether we use the calculation or we use the standard deduction. The beauty is with replacement lost revenue, with that government provision clause, it does not necessarily have to be ARPA-eligible or ARPA-related. You have the ability to use that money anywhere because they see it as lost revenue that you would have spent anyway on government services. So, we have an opportunity, if there's something beyond our normal traditional pandemic-related expenses that you want to spend this funding on, or if there's something that may be a little borderline between what the federal government has laid out and what we want to spend it on, we can go right to this bucket of money, depending on which method you decide to choose. So, we're going to go over that later in some more detail, but that is the major change from the interim rule to the final rule. So, on this slide, I just want to reiterate the fact that you all do have a set of priorities and goals that you already have, and that, you know, we think as staff, it's important to base our funding decisions that align with these goals and priorities within the ARPA-eligible expenditure category. So, just wanted to re-point that out, and it's probably something that we will draw more connections to as we move forward, but we definitely want to just, you know, this is what we use for our budget and our CIP. We thought as staff, it was important to try to align our spending with your goals and priorities. So, you all remember back in September and October, we decided to take a pause on our ARPA process to do our feedback from our, from the public. At that time, we had kind of approved and agreed upon some call centers to help us drive the discussion of how to spend the money that we had, and we had broken those into seven categories: broadband connectivity, community health, employee health and safety, housing and homelessness, business and employment assistance, water, sewer, stormwater infrastructure, and then ARPA administration and contingency. Those were the seven areas at the time that we had, we were leaning towards as helping us to drive this discussion. So, one of the things that we wanted to do as staff was to take these same call centers and demonstrate the feedback that we received during the public input and how they fit into these call centers. We don't have to still use these going forward, but we do think it's a good way to justify some of the decisions that we're going to make. The one thing I will point out is the very last one, with the ARPA administration and contingency, we are going to recommend that we change that to ARPA administration and other eligible projects, because we do believe that some of the feedback that we receive from the community may not necessarily fit nice and cozy into the other six categories, but it's ARPA-eligible, and we don't want to discount something just because it didn't fit into a nice group of titles. So, we still want you to consider it, so that's why we're proposing that name change, and you'll see that in the presentation. So, again, as part of the seven areas, broadband was to provide infrastructure to the underserved and underutilized community. Community health was for program services and materials to improve and protect the health and well-being of the community. Employee health and safety, we had talked about equipment, facility upgrades, premium pay, PPE, and other employee programs. Housing and homelessness programs and services to assist with mortgage utility assistance, standard housing programs, and homelessness programs. Now, I'm going through these descriptions. It's really an endless game of what could fit into these, but we just wanted to make sure you all had some ideas based on the feedback. On our business and employment assistance, you know, it's ARPA-eligible to provide assistance for businesses impacted by COVID, training programs, even transportation programs and childcare are all ARPA-eligible. Under the infrastructure, I think really in our case, we do have some water and sewer needs, but I think this was the biggie, was primarily going to be for broadband. But water, sewer, stormwater are still infrastructure-eligible. And then, finally, with the ARPA administration, depending on the scope of these projects, we could be looking at some additional staff we talked about in the finance and engineering. We may also have to bring in a consultant, depending on some of the projects. And then, like I said earlier, we wanted a bucket of catch-all for any of those ideas that don't fit nice and neat into the other six categories, we wanted you all to have that eligibility to consider those projects. So, what we're going to do as a leadership team is just kind of go over some of the feedback that we received in relation to those call centers. And I'm going to turn over the first one here to Mike Taylor to talk about broadband.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This topic is not new for this board. By way of reminder, we discussed this probably 18, 20 months ago as the COVID pandemic started to unfold and the reality that broadband access was not a luxury anymore, it's become a necessity and one of the utilities. And so, we had set forth a path towards trying to encourage providers to expand their coverage. As you know, we participated with an RFP to try to leverage great grant dollars at that time. There were some care supplemental funding. That particular provider that was interested in Pitt County was not successful in that bid. And by way of suggesting that also, counties have limited authority in this space. You also heard Brian talk about infrastructure. That was one of the things at the federal level that they started to understand that all counties did not have the same authorities across the nation. So, that's one of the reasons with the broader general standard deduction, they felt that local government had a better understanding of how these funds might better fit their community. So, we're not eligible to apply for any of the grants that came through the federal government through the state. As you know, they've allocated almost, in North Carolina, a billion dollars. So, the first round is the great grant, which we've discussed before. There's a little over $300, $320, $350 million that providers can apply for to extend service. That application window is open, and it will close, I believe, at the end of March. The thing that has changed in this particular round of grant funding is that if counties use their ARPA funds, it maximizes what the state and federal government dollars will cover, i.e., we can leverage the monies that we have and maximize that return for our community, thus freeing up additional dollars for other activities in our community. So, that's, that's again, kind of what Brian was saying. That's one of the bigger changes that has happened on this front. And we, we heard this in our listening sessions across the community, and as Brian said, just in, within the last two weeks, we've had an example of, and I know Commissioner Dunley had an example in Formul, where a neighborhood or an individual might have a home, neighborhood's on either side of them, and they can't get access, but they're within, you know, they can see the access from their home. And so, that's what these dollars are encouraged to try to promote.
Sorry to interrupt. I know you said that there's available grants that would allow us to maximize the amount of money that we would have to contribute to these programs. Could you just provide an example, just so that everybody's kind of on the same page?
Absolutely. So, in this particular round of great funding, which just opened, each project, and a project is what a particular provider would submit to the state as an application to extend service. They're going to look at how many additional homes or businesses that project would, would touch, and then they'll score that. What they will do is each project is eligible up to $4 million. Each county is eligible up to receive up to $8 million. So, our match of our ARPA would be different percentages. It could be a 25% match or a 15% match, based on whether we use ARPA funding or other county dollars. So, that's examples of how we might have a, a million-dollar project, and our match might be $150,000 in conjunction with the state and the private provider, depending on how that, that formula works out. It could be up to $250,000. Or, the counties have options of doing it, what they call do it alone. So, we could do an RFP, have a provider come in and say, "I'm going to do a million-dollar project, and we want to partner with you," and the county's share might be 50% of that project. So, you can see a sharp contrast of whether we go through a state program or federal, there's other federal agencies that have programs as well, versus trying to do it alone. So, what we've come to the consensus of through internal discussion is we should let these state programs that are open now run through their course. We'll know by mid to late summer if any of the providers that submit projects are successful. And then, if this board chooses at a later date to come back and say, "We would like to further expand," you could use additional dollars if you so choose.
But we would need to have something in by the end of March, if this is something...
Not the county.
Okay.
The county does not submit anything. Now, what, we have talked with several providers, and what they would like is, because they get extra points, is the county would say, "We would support you in your application, and if you're successful, we will do a match."
So, those would need to be identified, and then...
Those are the ones, to your point, that we would want to have consent from the board to sign on to.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add briefly to that as well, there's no prohibition in this round to partnering with multiple providers. So, in your last round of great, we came to the board, and we had to do an RFP, and we had to select a provider to partner with. Now, multiple private providers can submit applications with the expectation that the county will provide some match or partner with them. And each private provider may have a different proposal of how they propose to address the service within the community. Some may be a fiber option, some may be both fiber and a fixed wireless option. Some may have proposals that cover a certain amount of area, some may have proposals that go further. And I would say that there's, those private providers range in what they may anticipate that the county partner to contribute with, the least amount of contribution covering most likely the least amount of households, the highest dollar amount of contribution going the furthest in mileage of fiber, and the furthest in reach of households throughout the county, with particular eye towards those unserved and underserved areas. And I think from a dollar perspective, if I'm not jumping ahead too far, I think the board could allocate anywhere between $1 million and $8 million in order to get the most leverage from the, from what a private provider can do, if that makes sense.
I want to ask, this does not sound like it allows for county, working across county lines on a project, on this particular project, like broadband.
In, in this particular project, the way the definition, and it gets, it's a pretty thick legislation rule, my interpretation of the legislation and sessions that I've sat in is, we could, one particular provider could be providing service to more than one county in an, in an application. However, the state will consider the majority of the households served, that's the county that will be awarded, quote, from their funding allocation. That doesn't mean that they still can't work with that other county, but they're going to consider that, you know, either a Pitt County, or let's say, an Edgewood County project, based on the majority of the additional homes or businesses served. Now, now, to your point, we could potentially partner with a neighboring county and say, "We would like to put out an RFP that Janice was describing like we did the first time" and say, "We want to, to partner and combine our ARPA funds with another county to promote." Right now, I don't think that's the best opportunity for the funds, but that goes back to where I said, maybe later this summer, depending on the outcomes of those applications, where the board may want to consider to go back. Because there will be another round of funding to the CAB program, which has another $400 million, so there'll be another program that will follow, they're anticipating, in the fall time. That'll have different parameters.
I asked the question because a neighboring county commissioner asked me about, you know, pardoning or looking at the broadband project.
Yeah, I wondered, are the providers getting direction from us as to what our priorities are, or are we opening this up for providers to make proposals to us, you know, based on number of houses? And the reason for my question is, I'm wondering how much direction we would have towards the possibility of downtown, of the small-town central business corridors getting Wi-Fi, which would make the development of buildings that are now empty much more likely to happen as opposed to spreading this out over many private households, which is important, especially for education. But I think that one of the things that, you know, Fountain and, you know, Bethel and some of the smaller towns are suffering from is this downtown core that's really deteriorating badly, and with Wi-Fi, those buildings would be very rehabilit, you could rehabilitate them.
So, I think the answer to your question is, is both. Some providers have come to us and said, "This is what we're proposing," and again, they're looking at how to maximize the application because it's based on the additional number of homes or businesses served. They've also indicated their willingness, you know, within reason for us to try to modify that direction towards areas that we would, this board would like to see addressed. Also, to your point, Eric Morstein-Brown was in one of our sessions, and she mentioned that too, since you mentioned Bethel, and, you know, municipal government can also participate in conjunction with these providers as well, as far as extending coverage.
Are we offering any assistance to the municipalities in getting this done? I understand that some are a little fearful of stepping into this for the regulations, and I'm talking again particularly about Fountain, which is not utilized as funds.
At this point, the answer would be no, and that is because we're not the applicant. The provider is the applicant, and so, we have limited ability to direct what their business model is, other than trying to say, "Here are areas that we know are underserved or that we know might benefit and grow from that expansion," and go through those conversations.
Would it be appropriate, then, for a provider who had an interest to go directly to a municipality?
Absolutely.
And y'all could, the county could make that, that possibility known?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eric.
Thank you. What I, I'd like to know that, I'm thinking about outside areas, and the multiple county addressed that. But I'd also like to ask you about multiple providers, because the county in same area, it doesn't limit that, does it? Does it create a possibility of having more than one?
So, there's, there's not a prohibition on having multiple providers. What they will not do with these particular grant funds is provide grant funds to overbuild in an area that's already served. So, that's one of the parameters of these programs, is they want to make an impact on the unserved and underserved areas.
That, that hits me on the head.
But we are aware of providers that, you know, just by virtue of being in an area, you will start to have some choices and options.
So, what in not?
They will have some choices and options, but the grant, the state grant program will not fund duplicate service.
But that was my concern, because some of them are there, and that make, you can't get it, and then the service is horrible, and you don't, you have to deal with it.
And to your point, that's been one of the more frustrating areas because there's, and James is much more versed at this, but there's census tracts blocks, and that's how they track service. So, if someone, some one person has a service in that area, they consider it served. So, that complicates, and that's where, at the federal level, they're starting to come back and make those maps of unserved and underserved areas more granular, because they are problematic, and that's, that's actually what's been a big barrier to extending those services from other providers.
Thanks, Mike. So, today, coming out of today, what, because we're, you know, we're not the applicant, but obviously, how we come out today could potentially position us to better leverage the resources that we have to, to really make up for this rural, urban divide with broadband connectivity. What is your recommendation that we as a board do to, to provide the biggest, I guess, bolster to the hopes that that one person that's on, in the line that's not connected will actually see service at the end of this round of build-out?
You know, we had put in there an amount earlier around $6 million, and I think Janice had mentioned, you know, it could be arranged from one to eight. I think what we have, because this is on a faster track at the state level, whatever amount you, you may choose to reserve today, we may find, let's say, the applicants are successful, and if you put a reserve of $6 million or $8 million, and then we come back and find that, that our portion might be two or three, that frees up the rest of that money to be allocated, you know, in a fairly short time. So, I think we would want to, you know, leverage our bets, so to speak, in, in the short term, and then we would have the option to come back for this board to consider freeing up those.
So, go strong now, and then come back later if it's there, we'll have it later.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, based on what we have. Thank you.
And, and the other thing too, I'm not sure the interpretation of using ARPA funds... And, and the other thing too, I'm not sure the interpretation of using ARP funds. And, and Brian will get into this a little bit about the broader use of the standard deduction funds for any authorized government service. Since this is a very clear area for us, I think putting those additional funds directly as ARPA makes it clear for us, that would be my suggestion as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next call center is community health, and actually I'm going to tag team this with James Rhodes. But these are our programs and services meant to improve and protect the public's health. I think probably at the core of coronavirus relief, this might be one of the biggest areas that most people tend to think of. Based on the feedback that we receive from the communities, I definitely think there was a big push to see some type of help being provided outside of the city Greenville, the city of Greenville, Greenville and going out directly into the different neighborhoods. Specifically trying to hit on those neighborhoods that may find it more difficult to get into Greenville. So there was definitely a push, not only from our health department, but from ECU to look at some type of community healthcare directly towards the, the public. Our nonprofits, the biggest thing here, the nonprofits that are in that healthcare world, the biggest thing that we heard from them was they had a real difficult time trying to fundraise due to COVID. A lot of their traditional methods they could not do. So these are groups that are already performing a service that we feel pretty good, able to handle the capacity of, of any program that they may recommend, but they just had a tough time going out and fundraising on their own. So hopefully, as things are getting better, they're able to pick that back up, but they took a hit. Our EMS folks definitely saw a lot of calls and they have a lot of capital needs that this money would allow us. It may not necessarily be, have been brought on wholeheartedly by the pandemic. But definitely ARP is eligible for us to go out and look at some of the capital needs that we talked about about a month ago with our EMS folks. So, you know, that's an area that we did actually receive public input as well about. So I think that's something that we can look at. And then I'm going to turn it over to James to talk about remaining items on the spreadsheet, press, pressions coming later on presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Morning, everyone. One of the biggest meetings we had was at the Community Schools and Recreation Center where we received a lot of input concerning recreation needs throughout the county. One of the things that Alice King has worked hard on, and it was in your original package, were several improvements, not only to the Alice F. King District Park, but for other recreation facilities throughout the county. With that, there are some things at the district park we're looking specifically at. Those would be some improvements to our trail system, some other connecting trails in particular. We've got a very large neighborhood right behind the Wintergreen School, that it would be great if we could connect that to the school site so people could walk to and from school, also connect into the district park. So that's just one example. We are looking at making some improvements. You know, we have secured what used to be the Pitt Community College greenhouse facility. We see that as our more passive recreation area, where we've got two picnic shelters on site already at the district park, but really see the need, because those get a lot of use. We see those being a primary need in that particular area of the park. Restrooms are also needed out there. We only have one small area for restrooms. And again, the park and other recreational facilities have become very popular while we were under lockdown and continue to be very popular now. So that was the first up. The other item, snagging improvements, which may well be included in the infrastructure bucket as well. It does handle or straddle both things as far as community help as well. There are a lot of areas that are having issues with deferred maintenance of drainage ways. Our Soil and Water Office, as well as the Soil and Water Board, has recommended that we look longer term at some of the successes we've had with our snagging efforts or debris removal efforts. And would like to see an annual installment go towards this so we can continue to clean out some of these areas that are backed up, that are causing flooding problems in some of our neighborhoods and farm areas. So that request has been made. Two other things that you heard Mr. Taylor mention about census tracts. There is what's called QCTs, or qualified census tracts, that some of our programs that we're recommending really match nicely with. And in particular, north of the river, we have some qualified census tracts as far as ARP is concerned, where not many questions are asked about how the funds are being used. Why is that? Those census tracts are already designated as being qualified because of some of their socioeconomic issues. One in particular is right along Old River Road, north of the river again. So Ms. Commissioner Perkins-Williams has been working hard with Carolina Wetlands and some other groups that she's become acquainted with. We're looking at doing a wetland or watershed study. Also, some restoration areas, there are a lot of bio properties north of the river. They see this as a really good opportunity, number one, to help educate the public, whether it be through rain gardens or planting of trees to make those go back to their natural state. So those are some ideas north of the river. Most of those would be nature-based solutions. And the bigger problem, bigger issue we want to look at in one watershed is actually how to reduce flood problems there or the risks there. That will be an extensive study. The study and the implementation, both are included as part of our package that came from Carolina Wetlands. So with that, Mr. Chair, there's a number of items that kind of wrap up this particular bucket.
I'd like to note one thing, thank you so much. But are there limitations as far as what? Because we are itching for site progress, you know, when I'm talking about visible progress. Because we flood all the time, are there limitations? We can study, but is there going to be some action in, in, in the stuff? And we, we ready, we ready to see something?
Yes, with the proposal that's been submitted, it would be a study for a year or so. Then we would move into the implementation phase, and that might mean more improvements to some drainage ways or some other activities that would actually help reduce those flood risks. Thank you.
And I'm going to piggyback on James's answer real quick. On limitations, limitations are only on what's ARP eligible, and then your replacement revenue provision, as long as it's a government service, within the scope of what money we have, those are your limitations. Does that answer your question? All right, the next area is going to be our employee health and safety. I'm going to put this one up with Tim Corley. One thing that we do want to point out, this is one of those, another one of those Treasury final interim rule. The final interim rule did really stress on public safety, anything that we could do to help with our law enforcement folks. I think there was a big push in the interim rule, the, one of the major questions was radios. And I think it's not just from our agencies, but across the country, were radio system upgrades eligible? And the federal government actually jumped in and said, yes, so we do have some radio system and handheld radio issues that we have coming up. And they became ARP eligible as part of the final rule. So we wanted to make sure you are aware of that. At the courthouse, there are several areas that are ARP eligible. ARP looks at anything that we can do to address the court's backlog, because most of the court functions had to shut down during the pandemic due to their proximity of people together. So one of the areas that we had, we had some requests early on were some, from some of the judges and the district attorney about helping them address their backlog. So those areas are ARP eligible, and I'm going to let Tim jump in here to talk about the facilities up in the courthouse.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Pleased to be in front of you this morning. Talking a little bit about some of the employee-based items on the list under employee health and safety. And as Brian alluded to, one of the things that we heard from a lot of the court staff was the need for a six district courtroom at the courthouse. We met with those, those folks and they're very interested. Now that there's an additional judge, we, there is some court sessions that are being held in farm, but we'd like to bring those back to where they're more efficiently operating in the courthouse itself. So we've looked at that. That is actually part of our study that our architect, John Farkas, is doing now, looking at all the uptown space that will become available from not only the sheriff's administration folks leaving the courthouse, but also the register of deeds, which will soon be leaving and going to the First Street building. So that, that's one item. The second is facility upgrades, and this one had been brought in front of you before. This mainly has to do with the plumbing fixtures within the county, trying to make about 500 toilet sinks and water fountains, basically touchless. I think initially we were approved for about $250,000 for that work. I'm not, not sure how many of those we can hit. Obviously, we would hit as many as we could, those crucial facilities, so that not only hurt, stop the spread of COVID, but also other things that obviously from transmission of touch would hopefully be eliminated. The next would be the drive-through canopy at the health department. This would be utilized for, as you know, immunizations, shots, treatments, also testing, as well as other functions of the health department. They're looking for a place that's more permanent, that could be utilized for drive-through services for their, for their area. And last would be air filtration improvements. The county is part of the cares dollars that were initially allocated to us. We did do some HVAC improvements. Those were mainly to some of our more public spaces, such as the one we're in where we installed UV treating services to the HVAC existing equipment. We'd like to expand on that and replace some of our older equipment that is not as efficient, as well as installing some more air infiltration devices on some of our HVAC equipment throughout the county. So those are some items. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have related to this.
Mayor.
This pandemic has really brought on a lot as it requires respiration and impact on human life and being able to breathe and being able to direct the flow of traffic. Now, there are a lot of buildings that's just not there, in my opinion, about that. And that's a major undertaking. But with this COVID funds and whatever, we're, we're not going to apply money for buildings such as this.
Talking about replacement of actual buildings themselves?
Yes.
That, of course, that's not something that we've, we've put in as far as the stuff that we're providing you, the information we're providing you and the stuff we heard from the public.
I just want to make sure.
I'm not even sure if that would be something that would have, you know, applied to the, to the rules as far as replacing the building.
Thank you, thank you.
I think James is going to handle this next area.
Many of you are aware we work hand in hand with our community crossroad shelter to help reduce and/or eliminate homelessness here in our community. We've been working especially closely with Dr. David Collier, who now serves as the board chairman there, about a one-stop shop and what that means really for our homeless population. Most of you are aware that the current facility only has night services. People spend the night there. The one-stop shop that they're looking to have there on their campus would also provide day services. And in particular, medical services for our homeless population, as well as opening for others in our community. So that would be an expansion of their services. We see that as a very much needed facility. We're also looking to partner with the city of Greenville. Whatever funding that we put in from our coffers would go along with what the city would go along with as well. An equal partnership there. Also, other homeless programs, we're looking to expand those that we currently have. We do help with rapid rehousing, and that is what it sounds like. We try to get the homeless population into stable housing as quickly as possible. The big issue right now are available housing units, not surprisingly, especially affordable housing units. So we want to continue these services, but also work more closely with some landlords to make sure that we do have units available when we have homeless people to place there. The other part of this, and it goes back to those QCTs or qualified census tracts, are home repairs and home replacement programs. We do work annually to get into people's substandard homes to help those be brought up to standard. And that can be anything from major repairs to minor repairs, which might be a heating and air conditioning system. But what we're really missing out is a funding opportunity right now is replacement housing. We've got a number of folks that are on our list, our running list, year to year, that their homes are too far gone. It is just not practical to go in or feasible to go in and repair those homes. Those need to be replaced. So we're seeking funding for that, the replacement housing, as well as some possible lots. We certainly don't want to replace homes that are in the floodplain. Some of these qualified census tracts north of the river, flood-prone areas, we want to move those folks out of harm's way, get them in good, standard homes. We also have some additional funds available for repair, whether those be urgent repairs or some of those more major repairs. So those are all included, and we'll be focusing, our scoring system will be designated more so for those folks that are in these qualified census tracts. That's our preliminary assessment. That's what we have.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, this program that James is talking about is a program that we're familiar with running typical programs and the eligibility and the scoring, we know that there's a need. And I'd just like to add that when you start replacing homes in some of our more rural areas or even in and around some of those towns, it can change the whole face of a community based on what you pass. And it can raise somebody's standard of living from substandard to healthier. And so this is an understated program that when we talk about a visible difference, would certainly have a, a large impact.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rose, very recently, and I realize it was only one, I never looked at homeless as a problem in the rural area, because people have a way of really living with people. But I received a call from someone out of Connecticut about a breakup of a family. And there was something doing with the courts. And the man had no place to go, but he, his friends were all in the rural area. And he was living in a hut of sorts behind a store or something. And the family was real concerned because they knew. So we worked it out, but that seems to be a new issue that I've never looked at as it relates to rural area. But it actually happened, and I, I don't have any input. I just want to bring your awareness to that. And sometime I'm willing to share with you what really happened. But we ended up with the gentleman in Connecticut, but, and then they have to keep him there. But I'm sort of concerned that that is a rising issue for rural area families. I have no, otherwise, I just wanted an awareness of, at this board.
And I'll say the pandemic's had a negative effect, even so, on our previous efforts in trying to get the homeless housed. People are living in a lot of different areas now that are unsuitable for human habitation. We do have an outreach lead, or outreach supervisor now that goes out into these communities. And if we can determine that they're truly, by federal guidelines, a homeless individual, that's when we can bring them into our programs and help get them in stable housing. So again, for anyone that might be aware of that, if you can please refer those to our office, that would be a big help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. James, one, one point of clarification, I don't want to get too much in the weeds on it, but when you talk about home replacements, are you talking about home replacements for individuals that own their parcel?
Yes.
So we're talking also about directly impacting quality of homeownership for people that, that are the neediest, right?
That is the current model we have. That is the current model we have of homeowners, yes.
So it sounds like there's a, so we obviously have the triage needs with community crossroads, and we have the endgame homeownership, stable housing. Would, is it beneficial when we're looking at a homelessness plan here, and again, where we are in the process, looking at revenue that we're going to dedicate to, okay, we're going to seek to address a problem. We've got some things that we know that we need to address, but as we dig into it, you're kind of in the weeds on it. What would you like to see our board do here today in terms of providing you with the maximum flexibility so you can start to explore some housing opportunities that are not currently utilized? So we're not relying on landlords potentially, but maybe we're looking at some other remedies that have been utilized across the country, where you're using maybe, you know, small houses, you know, different things that are less, I mean, you're not talking about permanent housing, but transitional housing, things of that nature, when we're talking about housing stock to get people into. What's going to provide you with the most, and I'm not saying I have the answer, I'm just saying, what's going to provide you with the most amount of flexibility to really start to build out and work with our community partners to really make an impact so we're not just doing window dressing here on the homelessness issue?
Yeah, there are a couple of things, and certainly the models don't necessarily recommend transitional housing right now. Certainly, that serves a need in some areas, but typically, we're trying to get, especially the families, in stable housing. That means an apartment or a house of some sort. I think we're going to need to partner more, especially with the city of Greenville. The city of Greenville has an active program for affordable housing. The bulk of our, probably 90% of our homeless population ends up in these city limits. And with all said, we do need more affordable housing units here. Most of the people want to reside within the city for a number of reasons. Bus service, our services here at this complex, and a lot of other reasons. So all said, I think it's going to take us partnering with others. I don't know today that I can recommend that the county necessarily get into the process of building affordable housing units. I really think that's more of a city function, a municipal function, but I do think we can partner with them about that.
I like that. As Commissioner Nunley, if I may, what do you mean by not utilized houses? Because I just had this homeless thing, but what do you mean, or what are you referring to when you say not utilized? I think you might have said that.
I don't, I'm not sure. Well, I'm not sure what.
I was trying to understand when you said underutilized or not utilized houses. That just hit me because I'm just...
And James, just to clarify, these programs already exist, and this money would then be able to immediately be used to fund those, correct? And there's criteria and different things that individuals would have to go through in order to qualify for these programs. Is that right?
Most exist. Some of them have just not been funded in a while, so we'd reactivate some, yes. But the affordable housing component is something that's sorely missing, and we just, I don't have a good solution for that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, Mr. Chair. James, in reference to the substandard housing, and I think I heard you allude to the fact that you might be thinking in terms of partnering with the city of Greenville. Maybe you didn't say it, but I think that that is a line that we might want to look into. There's several individual groups have come to me in reference to substandard housing, especially in the West Greenville area. I think there's a need, a tremendous need, for the partnership with the city of Greenville and the county to come and try to upgrade these homes, again, in West Greenville. There's a lot of groups has come to me and brought that to my attention. Are there any consideration of doing that?
I want to draw a sharp line between our homeless programs, where I really believe there's some good opportunity for partnerships, as opposed to our housing programs. Remember, the city of Greenville is an entitlement city, so they automatically get federal funds down from a number of sources like CDVG. So when we go out to our community, we're not able to serve with our programs anyone within the city limits of Greenville. So those funds that they receive are specific for that area. The funds we receive are for unincorporated Pitt County and those other nine municipalities. So there's a little differentiation there. We oftentimes get referrals from the city, depending if they've got someone calling in from our jurisdiction, and just vice versa as well. So partnership in that respect, we certainly use some of the same contractors, but I really see that as one that's already defined as to what jurisdiction would serve which area.
Mr. Rose, a major problem is ETJ and housing and underserved, because there are a lot of those in my district that falls into that very thing. Because even when you look at, oh, we were row right up to that bridge, is ETJ. And the city does not want to address it in any manner, and we have issues with my understanding of it.
And we have served several people within the ETJ there, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to make a quick point in Commissioner McGloughorn's question. Art funding, the county has art funding, and so do the municipalities. So any group that approaches you, if it's housed in one of the municipalities or is going to serve people in those municipalities, remind them that they will benefit better, not only asking us, but also turning to those municipalities and asking them for funding. If it's education-related, the school systems also receive art funding. I think Dr. Linker talked about it at the CIP. It's a different term, but it's basically the same thing. So if you know of any programs or groups, tell them to reach out to, by all means, come to us, but also reach out to them to maximize their programming. Our next group is our business and employment call center. Sam Kroom is going to go into more detail about this one.
Good morning, Chairman Fitzpatrick, commissioners, Commander Gallagher. It's good to be with you all this morning. How blessed we are to be able to sit here today and help our citizens and our community rebuild. My task is to basically highlight the business and employment assistance to address the negative economic impact caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. Two examples come to mind. One, to assist businesses impacted by COVID. This can be public, excuse me, employment training programs. Recently, had the opportunity to attend the Rivers East Workforce Development Board's job fair that was also sponsored by Pitt County Economic Development. And one of the universal themes I heard at that job fair was that we need employee training programs. This is an opportunity, if we can align some art money, to help our citizens to train for jobs that have either came about because of COVID. This could be with our pharmaceutical companies to help them get trained. Or it can be companies that have been negatively impacted, and maybe their workers that they're bringing in need to be retrained, could be reopening situations. We also need to look at work transportation programs, and also childcare programs. Another example that comes to mind is assisting organizations who assist citizens with recreation and healthy living. An example that comes to mind there is the Pitt Greenville Convention Visitors Authority and the Greenville-Pitt County Sports Commission. This is one of them areas that I kept to independently verify that since March 2020, they've actually lost $685,900 from the occupancy tax. And what does this represent? That's $11,431 and $667 that our hotels have lost by not having people to stay at their hotels. And that also goes to speak, if it's just hotels who've lost that amount of money, how much has other public sector, public sector, community organizations, how much money have they lost? This can also go to like, community arts program. It's also like Deputy County Manager Brian Barnett spoke about earlier. This is nonprofit programs and their fundraising. How have they been impacted by not being able to have their fundraisers? I see a question?
Yes. Mr. Kroom, the employee training program and that sort of thing, this is a very weak point with the Rivers East organization, because one of the major problems that exists is the training of the young black male. There has been an obvious, some reason to refuse giving them those early and soft skills they need. And I know that the, because this board has sent me to that organization as a representative for a number of years in it, but what bothers me is that they, their refusal, and I hope you have a better relationship with this organization, and you're trying to use some good words, with that organization that can address underutilizing the money that they are provided for Pitt County that they seemingly hasn't seen the need to do. And the young black males and receiving those soft skills are ideally reached out by the negative aspects of the community, such as gang and stuff like that. So whatever you do to that, when you start getting to employee training, it would be good to give them something because they do want an ownership and some money in their pocket for a Pepsi-Cola and a honey bun.
Correct. And just to address your concerns, Pitt Community College and ECU are our educational partners to help us with workforce development. And recently, we just attended a Pitt Community College event that actually spoke to that issue. How great would it be for us to partner with institutions like Pitt Community College, ECU as well, to help all of our citizens?
Well, they cut Pitt Community from that, and they were doing an excellent job with that area. And when they moved the program from Pitt, I could tell the difference in the area that I serve. I just wanted you aware of that, and I appreciate your looking at that issue.
Yeah, and thank you. And also, too, we need to look at the, maybe the application process through this as well, to make sure these organizations' missions clearly align with Pitt County's priorities. And of course, we went through the priorities earlier. They also need to show that they've had an economic impact from COVID as well. And of course, they can do this, but maybe through the application process, and just simply write us one or two paragraphs to say how they've been impacted, their businesses. And also, how would they use the art money, and how will it be spent, what projects, and how the projects align with our priorities here with Pitt County. They can also provide us organizational experiences and capacity to deliver proposed projects and timeline from start to finish. They can explain the projects and how they will address the health and economic impact of COVID, and provide us data to support their project. Another thing that they can use is, they can show us how they track and measure the impact of their projects. And also, they can explain how the project will be sustained after we invest art funds with them. And also, we probably want to look at the dollar amount, whether there's a max or a minimum that we want as far as these applications. So, and that's my presentation, and anything that y'all would like to ask?
Yes, I would like to ask, would the program that earnestly presented at our meeting with Pitt Community this month, would that program work here with the nonprofit program part of this spending? And I would like to, and if it does work with it, I would like to see that program extended, funded, or not just the housing piece of it, but the program itself.
Yes, and I think you're referring to the reentry program that Ernestly spoke about, and I think that we could consider that in this bucket, or in the, if the board opts for the $10 million loss revenue bucket. If it doesn't fit within this one, then your alternative is to put it in that one.
Thank you, Senator.
And this next project is not a surprise to anyone as far as wastewater infrastructure is concerned. You may recall, we worked on phase one of Candlewick, starting in about 2015. It took several years to get a three-mile force main installed, as well as a major pump station right out adjacent to that particular development on Stansburg Road. Unfortunately, we were not able to serve many of the households. The major portion went into that long line and the pump station. We have about 90 homes remaining in that district, sanitary district, that we'd like to see serve. The funding for this part should be similar to the original part, but serving a lot more households. And remember, this is an area with high water table, which is causing problems with those older septic systems. And we really see that we've invested a lot of time, money, and effort to get the sewer service there. We'd really like to see the remaining households connected. So there is a request in for about $4 million to assist in that
How much?
extension. $4 million, and that is a rough estimate. And it's serving about 90 households. Welcome, any questions? Thank you.
And then finally, our last call center is our art administration and our eligible, other eligible art projects. As we talked about before, we may need to look at hiring some staff, depending on the level of projects that we end up rolling out. This would also be the area, if you all have been contacted or have any ideas, that don't nicely fit into the other six groups that are eligible. And then, you know, this may be an opportunity whereas today or in the future, the near future, we decide that we do want to set some money aside just in case of the unknown. Don't feel like today we need to absolutely allocate every dollar out, but as this virus continues to change, we may need money in the future. We did receive the CARES Act, and we have received this money. I wouldn't necessarily bank on a third round of federal funding, so you may have an opportunity to just set some money aside as we move forward. I do want to, again, thank all of our public for participating in our process, give us a lot of really good feedback to where we are at this point. The next thing that we probably do want to jump into is something to think about. How do we want to allocate? Do we want to allocate directly? Do we want to look at amounts? Do we want to look at percentages? And then, I think, you know, Sam Kroom kind of laid the groundwork when he was talking about the employment call center. When we look at our different call centers, how do we want to go about taking requests from the public? You know, do we want to do an RFP process? Do we want to, we kind of already have an RFP process in place for our existing nonprofits. Do we want to piggyback on top of that? We'll probably need to look at who needs to review them. But I do think it's important for us not to just solicit ideas, but to make sure that they do align with the county, that they are, have the capacity to do what they say they're going to do from a service standpoint and a programmatic standpoint, and also from a compliance. They have to make sure that we account for all of our money. So that may not be a question that we answer today, but I do believe in the future we will need to determine the appropriate process for our community to ask for funding for our capital, for the art money. So before we jump into our fun interactive part, I'm going to ask one more round of questions that you may have about our art funding and our call centers and where we are at this point.
And Brian, would this, I'm sorry, would this also be a good point to entertain a motion with regard to the revenue loss?
I was going to do that after the questions, but yeah, before we get into the actual worksheet.
I want to know, what do you I want, I want to know, what do you mean by contingent staff?
Well, right now, we're looking at, um, just from a compliance standpoint, from the art funding, um, I, I think it would probably be appropriate to have someone in the finance department who is a more art-centric, um, instead of just all that falling on me and, and our existing staff. Um, that seems to be the trend across the state. It looks like a lot of the larger and medium-sized locations and jurisdictions are bringing in art person to administer everything to make sure that our groups that we give money out are being compliant, and to make sure if there's any changes from the federal government that we're, stay on top of that. Um, if we look at any, any type of capital or facilities projects, uh, I think our folks in engineering would probably appreciate some additional help to make sure that those projects stay on task. Because ultimately, even if we, um, if we, if we allocate the funding today, we still have to have it all paid out within a certain amount of time. So we want to make sure that staffing is not a reason why we miss those deadlines to get all this money allocated and paid out. But right now, those are probably the two positions that we're looking at, um, that we've looked at from the start as we've gotten ideas from the community and from staff. Um, I don't necessarily say that's going to be the last two, but right now, I think that would be a good starting point once we know where that money is going to start going and spending. That's probably the reason why we haven't brought anybody in, because right now, we don't know how to really fully utilize them because we haven't put our money into the different categories.
Does that contingent mean temporary to handle just art?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to understand, because some definition may have many, uh, forms of definitions. So I just wanted to know, I understand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you?
Brian, I have a question. When you talk about the formula method or calculation, as opposed to the $10 million for, since, since I don't understand the, the, what goes into the calculation exactly, how might it determine what's the best way? Are we not really kind of dependent upon you? It sounds to me off, off the cuff, that $10 million looks like the right way to go.
So to answer your question, uh, what goes into that is we have to look at all of our revenues from 2016 to 2019 to determine our baseline, and then to see where we finished. And the most recent audit was 2021. So from a comparison standpoint, um, the calculation, depending on whether you use solid waste in the mix, because solid waste revenues are a calculation that you can plug, your loss revenue was somewhere between $1 million to $3.5 million. So you would be kind of capping yourself at probably best case scenario of $3.5 million versus the $10 million method, which would allow you to cap yourself at $10 million if you so choose to go down that route.
So it sounds like the $10 million gives us better options.
I, I would have to agree. It gives you more flexibility for those projects that may be borderline, or it also gives you the flexibility for anything that may come up that you may want to use that funding for. As opposed to, at the, at the max, if you look at solid waste in the mix, it's, um, well, without solid waste, it's $3.5 million. With solid waste, it's three, it's, it's going to be about $1 million.
Thank you.
Would you say that, that hiring this, uh, staff or consultant, uh, would be kind of the first thing that we need to take on?
Well, I, I think you kind of, in a way, blessed us to move forward, at least on the finance one. The engineering one, we, we haven't actually brought back to you. Um, I think it would be prudent to see where you want to spend the money before you brought in the staff, because I don't, I don't want to bring anybody in, and, and we're not maximizing their time and their potential. Um, but I, I do think ultimately, it's going to be important to have that additional person or, or two additional positions to make sure that we're staying on time and that we're not missing anything.
Well, I ask that because I'm wondering, how long would it take you to get that person in?
It, right now, it's actually quite competitive, because all the jurisdictions and locations are trying to hire folks. Um, so I can't, I can't even begin to tell you how fast we could get somebody in place. Um, the sooner the better. If, after we make some decisions today, I would tell you would be my preference.
Um, the higher time contingent, does that mean that the, the staff member or consultant would be temporary? Or is this permanent?
They would be temporary with, with the option, just like any of our other grant-funded positions, if we want to bring them on as, as things come along. I mean, we have until 2026 technically to pay out anyone we bring in, so, I mean, a lot could change.
Okay, so there could be a, a slot open for them or whatever.
Correct.
I thought that was right, but I wanted to kind of hear it. Thank you.
I wondered if, uh, if some of these might be, I understand we can't, uh, spend money within the city of Greenville, but if there, some of these projects might, um, open themselves up to collaborative, uh, expenses where we would share cost with the city. And I'm thinking, really in particular here, before I, I let you lose to answer that, about a, a study that would look at, uh, tran, public transportation in the county and combining the, the many types of bus services that we have. It seems to fit under, uh, several of the, uh, uh, goals here. Certainly access to recreation and in this discussion about a gym on the north of the river or the construction of the, uh, a new gym at Alice Keen, that access is, is in the statement, but we're not really addressing accessibility to those kinds of, uh, facilities unless you have a car. So my question, uh, generally is about, are some of these, the types of projects where we could get, you know, piggyback with a municipality like Farmville or Greenville? And second, is there a way in this, this, all of this money to at least get a, a study going to see about the feasibility of public transportation and where that would fit?
So to answer your questions, first, art funding is not contingent upon location. Uh, we can spend money essentially on anything that's art-related and that we have state authority to spend money on. So if we wanted to spend funds within a municipality, as long as you all approve it, there is no provision that says we cannot. I do believe that James Rose was talking about some of the existing programs that we have in place that we could fund with art funding that do limit whether or not there can, can occur within the city, the city limits. Um, in terms of a study, um, basically in terms of anything, you always have your loss revenue provision as an option. So if you do decide to use the $10 million route, um, as long as it's a government service, which a study on transportation would fit that calculus, fit that eligibility, then you could, you could fund that through the loss revenue provision. Um, and then, and then I think from an art standpoint, it may be something that we have to look a little deeper in. My, my recommendation is always going to be to look at the art-eligible, uh, nature of a project first, and then look at the loss revenue provision second as an option. Because we want to make sure that, because that loss revenue provision is so large and broad, we want to make sure that we are not capping it on art-eligible projects, um, when we look at consideration. So I definitely think that could potentially be a project either one place or another.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if it's in order, I'd like to move that we approve the loss revenue method pursuant to the $10 million. I guess directed up.
I second it.
It's been moved improperly second, Madam Court?
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McAlhmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we knocked that out. So what we have for you all today to, to really start our conversation on allocating out the funds, um, and it's all, you don't have this in front of you, so it's all going to be on the screen. Um, and I don't necessarily know if we'll complete all of this today or not, but I definitely think it's a good starting point. Um, so what I've done for you on the screen is I've given you our total amount of allocation. I've also plugged in some examples, so all of these we can zero out. But I just wanted you to understand how this could work.
Could you slip it over like that? I can assume what it is, but.
Do you not see the spreadsheet?
Our, um, our left edge is cut off slightly. I'm not sure we can fix that.
Oh, okay. I, I, so our assumption might can flow with that. Oops, that's the wrong way.
So, well, let me, let me walk through it, and then if there's something that you need to see, we can slide it over.
All right.
So, um, the, I've basically broken this down into three sections.
Put it back where it was, it's not quite there.
The other way.
The other way.
That's as far as I can go.
That's wrong.
That may be, we may have to get the, we may have to get the PIO folks in here to, to help us. Um, but I'll, I'll, I'll walk you through it.
Okay.
Do it super old school. So basically, it's broken into three categories. The first category is our call centers that we just went over, those seven call centers. And what, what you're tasked with in this first section is, do we want to just, do we just want to put a dollar amount? Or do we want to say, hey, we're going to put a percentage of our funding towards this particular one call center? The second section is the replacement revenue. I kind of got ahead of you here, and I did put, I, I did go ahead and just put in the $10 million just to so that you would be able to see how that money is spent out. So if there's something that we want to just directly put within that replacement revenue provision of $10 million, in my example here, I included the radios and some equipment for EMS as just an example. And then the thir, third and last would just be if there's something that's a direct allocation that, hey, we know we want to spend X amount of dollars on because we've gotten a proposal for that, or we've gotten contact from you all. Um, and then all of it is a running total, and then it tells us how much is left over of our $35 million. Um, dollars, so, um, actually, because you can't see it, I'm going to start zeroing out some things. Um, we do have 1.7 that we've already spent on our art, uh, with our premium pay and our COVID vaccine pay. So that amount of money, and I'm just going to use some round numbers for right now, but obviously, I can go back in later and change it, uh, as needed.
And Mr. Chairman, as you, um, as the board shares some ideas on a percentage or a dollar amount that might go into a particular category for a particular purpose, we can put all that in there. And then whether we finish or not, it would be nice if what we finish today, the board has a consensus or a vote to say, move forward with what you've got, and then we'll revisit this, um, as this document continues to live and develop. So if, for example, there was a consensus on the board to say, we want to put $8 million in the broadband bucket today, that doesn't mean that's set in stone forever. If we wind up, uh, matching $4 million on a great grant, for example, um, and then another amount on a cab grant, and we find that a year from now, we've leveraged enough funds to not need it all, we can move things around. But I think it would be helpful with this pot of money sitting there now to have some direction on some immediate expenditures and some direction on your priorities so that others know how we fill in the rest of the gaps.
I like that.
And also, I think especially if there is an issue of you being able to see everything on the screen, that once we finish today's session, that we'll print this out and send it back to you. Um, and then I'll send you a blank one too, if you want to make some notes of your own, and we can, we can go from there.
Yes.
Letter.
I guess we'll see how we. I think, so my understanding is, if we could get, and Madam Manager, if I'm interpreting this correctly, if we could get a list of some immediate things that we could have a direct impact on and, and move forward with now, then we would have the opportunity to come back with other projects that we want to address at a later date when we find out more specifically what those needs are going to be and, and maybe what the cost exactly will be, is that right?
And I definitely think that even if you set money aside today, to your point, if we come back later and have fine-tuned what that amount looks like, then we can obviously duck that off the sheet and then move that back into the pot for further reexamination.
But getting a consensus today would allow us to at least get something going.
Yes, and I, and I do think, Mr. Chairman, that there will be a need for some future additional workshops. Um, I, I think so, not, but I think we can also accomplish some today to get the ball rolling. And then it kind of establishes our framework for how things will fit in, especially if there's going to be a point in time where, under a particular category, you want to set aside an amount of money, but you want the county to embark upon an RFQ process so that nonprofits or other organizations can, um, make specific requests for allocations within that bucket, if that makes sense. So I think there'll be certainly need for further discussion, but I think we can accomplish some things today as well.
Yeah, that's what I see.
Well, does that mean that we're not gonna, because some stuff takes very in-depth look at, like broadband. That, that's a big ticket item, but it's not going to be something that decreases maybe. It'll be something that may go the other way, but we need to start looking at that because that impacts our economy, that impacts finances, that impacts, um, uh, whether we can develop further, you know, beyond Greenville.
And that might be a way to start. How much money do we, go ahead.
So I, I don't know what everybody else's feelings are on today and, and bringing a consensus on certain items, but in reviewing this and, and in looking at everything, you know, we have the opportunity here to use some of these funds that we probably may never get again to directly impact the county, um, for the years to come. And, and my hope is, and certainly everyone can advocate for different things, but I hope that we're considering using these things for money that will, um, go towards, you know, development and different things, such as the broadband program, um, you know, which would allow, I mean, the number of different areas that we could impact with housing and education and other, um, quite frankly, just the quality of life for the residents of Pitt County. I would like to see us try and move forward with doing something with that sooner rather than later so that we can use that money that we've been given and, and use it in, in a wise way. Mike, if, if you could just, in the grant proposal and the different process, what would allow the county to maximize and leverage the most amount of money and use it also then the most efficiently? What would you?
Yeah, so what, what I believe is, um, and, and the number that we have put in there was based on our earlier project with the RFP, and so we just used that because that's what we knew. Um, I believe that we will be, um, closer to $4 million or less when it's completely done. Um, don't know that to date, but again, I think with the considerable timeframe that they're, um, processing these applications, that within the next six months, we'll have a better idea of what that number might look like, which would allow this board to free up those for other sources. So again, I think to the whole point, trying to feel un, uncomfortable with a number today, I think there's going to be some broad latitude.
So, right, should we say six or eight?
My understanding is the large, in your presentation from earlier, the larger amount that we initially allocate for that would allow the county to leverage that dollar amount with other organizations for grant purposes to then free up money to where we can put that back to somewhere else. So if I'm understanding you correctly, the larger amount that we allocate this morning, hopefully, or whenever, will allow for more grant writing purposes or opportunities for the county to receive, which then can be used in other programs.
That is correct. Right now, with the great grant program, the most that the county could receive, or not, the providers could receive on behalf of expanding service in Pitt County would be $8 million. So that's kind of what we're using as a, as a, as a category hold placeholder.
I have a question.
Sure.
What about, um, connecting with cable versus wireless? It's my understanding that, uh, the, the companies are now starting to consider having a wireless, uh, so that it covers a broader area, you don't have to go to the trouble of digging, you know, putting in the cable and physically connecting it to a house. And, and would that not be a cost savings also?
Yes, there is a cost savings. It's obviously cheaper, and we've talked, back to Commissioner Albright's point earlier, we've talked about in those particular areas that it might be cost prohibitive initially to go in with a fixed wireless solution so we can have an impact in that particular area. There are higher, uh, scoring points now for fiber to the home because that future proves, if you will, some of the service levels and, uh, scaling of the speed and capacity. So I don't, we're approaching it not as an either or, but a, a combination so we can have the biggest impact.
Okay.
And the other point about your fixed wireless, um, that, the investment in those, that equipment that would go on towers like you see for cell service, that equipment could be repurposed to other locations so that provider does not have a sunk loss expense other than the installation of that equipment.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you, Mike.
I'd recommend that we go ahead and maximize, um, where we are with this and go ahead and put eight, you know, with the expectation that, you know, that's going to.
Hopefully come down.
Come, come down at the end of the day, but. Come, come down at the end of the day, but through the beginning of this grant writing process, if that's going to position us to get this to the most people the soonest, then I think we just go in big. That would be my, that would be my, my thought.
Is your thought a motion?
Well, and what we can do is if everyone wants to say how, so you'll see now you've got 8 million under broadband connectivity on your spreadsheet. If the board is willing, I would say let's go ahead and put in the categories that you know you want to put in today. Let's get to a breaking point on the ones you're sure about, and then let's adopt what we have and then come back and fill in as we go along.
Would it be prudent to go ahead and get a consensus on each one of yours prior to?
You could, or do it as a package if you'd like. Probably have more success as a package at the end.
Okay.
Once everybody has their.
All right, make them up, Chris. You start.
Well, I think we're going to wait. So, okay.
And I would tell you just from an exercise standpoint, that motioning everything you bring up will be here all week.
Yeah. It will be what?
We'll be here all week.
Well, I agree with combining it.
Okay.
If I understand, we're trying to come up with some projects that would spend some money pretty quickly, and it sounds like broadband is something that will not get spent quickly, but we want to save it and make sure that we have it?
Yes.
Okay. Ones that looked like we could use the money pretty quickly were those employee health and safety, such as the radio system upgrade, the courtroom operations and facilities, and that drive-through canopy at the health department. Those could also all be done right, right quickly, I believe. What did the community crossroads request?
That was $1 million.
Okay, I'd like to see us go ahead with that, or at least a portion of that. And I'll, I'll stop at that point. If I understand that this is sort of what we're trying to do before 11, we're trying to get projects that could use the money and that we could, could get moving on them. And so I'm making that suggestion that we, you had figures, I believe, up earlier for the radio system upgrade, the courtroom operations and facilities, and the drive-through canopy?
Yes.
Okay, and then also the community crossroads?
And the community crossroads. That continued upon the city.
Matching that, yes.
Well, and I was going to one step because community crossroads is under the homelessness umbrella. I was going to maybe recommend that we, maybe we commit to a significant dollar amount in that pot. At this, because, you know, that's not just the full answer. So maybe we're looking at, maybe we're looking at, you know, community crossroads is a million, maybe three, you know, maybe dedicating three, since we're just brainstorming here, 3 million for homelessness in that pot, just so that we have some room to work with.
I think that's good. I, I'm trying to get that million to them as quickly as possible is what I'm trying to do. So I understand their facility has some needs and it would be helpful to them.
I would count it, this is. I would agree with 4 million in the homeless.
Chris, were you okay with that and wanted to put that to 4 million?
4 million in the homeless.
That's fine with me.
Where, where is it that the county in the rural areas will see an impact?
We're not deciding right now. We're just saying that we want this, this is a pot that we want to set aside to address homelessness.
And then each expenditure out of that pot based on today's priorities, we'll have to come back to the board. But.
And with the reentry program, where we want, where do we want?
I think your reentry program, Brian.
Homelessness is where you're from?
Yes, you did. And Brian, where would you put the reentry program?
For funding the program itself.
I would either see that as a direct allocation or within your 10 million for now. And if we can put that in a more eligible category, we can shift it, but to get it into your numbers. And the other thing this exercise is doing is showing you that as we put in these numbers, what's actually left. So we know what we're working at. And then once you see this, you can see whether or not that really aligns with your true priorities.
So I'm still trying to get that million in community crossroads. So can we take one of the 4 million out of homeless and put it into a direct allocation for community?
I don't see anything in the county.
We'll see what, so from a spreadsheet standpoint, I put the community crossroads on the sheet and then out to the side, I put the million dollars.
Got you. Okay, okay. Thank you. I see that. Thank you. Okay. Got you. Got you. Thank you.
See, yeah, we counted it two times.
It's a lot.
I haven't filled in any of the dollar amounts into the direct allocations yet.
I'm understanding. Thank you.
I'm just keeping a tally as we go and then I can fill it back. I'm sorry, it's not going to help you see the total as we go, but.
Brian, to finish Commissioner Albright's input, he also had said the facility needs at the courthouse. If you'd plug that in as well.
I think, I think on that particular one, we don't have a direct number yet.
You had, I thought you had some numbers.
I even.
Okay, got you. Okay.
I have a spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you. Got you.
I hope it's less than 500,000.
Yeah, I think, well, Tim, could you give us an outside ballpark on that?
100,000.
Okay, so would it be safe, so would it be safe to say 750,000? And then if that's over, you could always reallocate, but at least to know that we've got some money set aside for those.
And that canopy, how much was the canopy? Do we have that or is that a guess?
Yes, he can pull it.
I know that the, the HVAC was about 800,000 initially. That was for the HVAC replacements throughout the county. The plumbing fixtures, which I mentioned, was I think a quarter million, 250,000. That was what was originally allocated when we first came to the board for approval on some projects. And I believe the canopy was around 250,000 as well.
That's a good ballpark if we could work with that. That's fine.
The canopy's already up there.
And from a process perspective, once you create these buckets, as the project and the actual bid comes in, that comes back to the board for entry of that contract and full expenditure of that money. This is just to let us know what we can do tomorrow to move forward on.
Isn't that the drive-through canopy?
250 on the drive-through canopy.
And it's, it's already up there, number three.
It seemed like, it seemed like one of the areas, and we didn't get too much into it, but was the watershed and the water, stormwater. There's a real cross pollination with community health and a lot of the public feedback that we got on, you know, parks plans, things of that nature. We've got Alice Keen. I wonder if we maybe as a board can look at that, that community health that now, and I don't know if it's worthwhile as an exercise to kind of, because it seems like those projects, when we heard from the community, they kind of align with the, the water. If we maybe want to start looking at, these are maybe big projects, big ticket items, and maybe start, maybe James, maybe you could help steer us on what dollar amount you think would be good on the community health piece, health piece. Because I'm thinking that dollar amount might be pretty big.
Yeah.
Well, actually, just to start off with the outdoor recreation that we were looking at, and we were very specific, again, with some of the forms that we submitted initially, that was about $600,000. And that was specifically for the Alice F. Keen. We would look to broaden that. We've talked a lot about, especially with the manager, talking more about getting to these school sites that are in the rural areas and upgrading some of those facilities. So if you're asking on the spot, 1 million at least.
So, so, but if we were, if we were, I'm just spitballing here because this isn't an exercise. If we were saying we want to, Alice Keen is great, but we really want to make a significant impact across the county at revisiting parks, revisiting greenways, revisiting whole, holistic infrastructure impact here on community health, water. You know, we've got all this federal buyout land that we could potentially leverage. You know, we're just, we're just talking. We're not making motions as, as Brian's saying here. A million seems pretty small to me.
That's just for the recreation component. Even that's very small. That's streamlined. If you're wanting off the cuff, I can say it's 35 million easily, but.
So, but would, would, would say with 10 million?
10 million would start us getting there, yes.
I mean, and it's, we don't throw those types of numbers around a lot, but this is our.
Well, the watershed study itself is predicted to be, and the improvements that go along with that and the snagging is right at $5 million itself.
Okay, that's those 10 million.
Are there any federal funds in helping that?
There are, and there's actually some state funds right now with the snagging that we're looking at, but those have restrictions that for the eastern counties really make it hard, one being that all that debris has to be removed out of the floodplain. And some of those floodplain areas are a mile wide. So that really, we struggle with trying to do that in some of our more extensive flood prone areas. But yes, there are other funding sources.
What kind of monies are you talking about?
Um, right now, it's an application process, and our soil and water office is looking at, haven't come to a, a direct amount yet, but probably looking at a half a million the first round. And I think there'll be subsequent rounds to come through as far.
Well, having remembered Floyd and the county, 58% of the county was underwater and a large contributor happened to be that the snagging operations were long since delayed. It would seem prudent for us to do whatever we can to make sure that doesn't happen again.
I'd say, yes, let's start with, I think 10, you know, and then start with 10 and then maybe, you know, while we're developing, go like maybe with, you know, we could work from there. Because I think, I remember Floyd too. It's a big deal.
Yeah, Brian, I think if you could add 10 million in the spreadsheet under that category, and then the next thing I'd direct the board's attention to would be if you wanted to, and I think we're accomplishing a lot this morning already. Just direct your attention to that business and employment assistance. And if there's an amount of money you want to plug in there so that we can give it the relative priority, that gives us some good direction.
Brian, if we could add 5 million to that for the business.
Business.
And of that, could we, could we think of about the 681,000 loss that would be one of those immediate funds for Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority? Am I, I think I'm in the right section. I mean, we also go ahead and ask for RFPs from, is it too soon?
No, no, it's like a bad auction. I got a bunch of numbers coming at me.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were in the business and employment assistance.
I was from 2 million and then it went to 5 million and then 680.
You're, you're at five for business and then within that five.
That five, the 681,000 as an immediate of, of help for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, which would come out of that 5 million? And I think you also mentioned the need for RFPs from the nonprofits. If we could go ahead and put that notice out that we would be looking for RFPs from nonprofits for funding, did I understand that right?
Yes. I'm with you. I'm with you. We're there.
You care to pay us out. So then where did you want to put the money for the nonprofits?
Oh, that's in, also under business and employment assistance. I thought that was, you, I thought I heard that we needed RFPs from the nonprofits and that we needed to ask for those and that would be a next step.
No, I think that's captured Brian. So I thi, I think where he's going is 5 million under that business and employment assistance with the 681 directly allocated for convention and visitors bureau. And then he's saying, go ahead and take your next step and let's formulate the RFP that we talked about and Sam talked about that can further allocate within that, the remaining within that 5 million.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
I'm with you. Got it. He's got it too. He just didn't know it.
Thank you.
And, and I would tell you, from a traditional budgeting standpoint, the 35 million is all that we have, but for our discussion, if we go over it, we can always trim it back down.
That's right.
So I think we're going, I think, I think that may be what will happen, but.
So are we over it already, Brian? Is that what you're saying?
We're, we're down to 2 and 1/2 million.
Yeah, okay, we're good.
So, so when are we going to, because the money comes in two steps. You can't, we couldn't do all this at once. When are we going to establish priority?
Well, if you, if you drag it out till May, then you're good because that's when we get our other half of our money. But if there was something in that first, obviously in the first 17 million, you've already spent, 10% of that's already gone. So that, that leaves you the remaining balance of that. So just like anything else we do, we just have to look at it from a cash flow standpoint. And it may be that there's something that based on the proposals that we get, timing wise, it will, it'll match up perfectly anyway, but that's a good question. I'm going to make budgeteers out of all of y'all.
Brian, can we add 500,000 to the ARP administration?
Broadband for one of the areas.
Say that again.
500,000 to the ARP administration of the eligible projects, just so we can remark some of that. And I would say, Brian, if everybody would kind of, to Tom's question, you know, certain projects, like since we're going to have the register of deeds office and different things that are going to be moving, and that's already ongoing, hopefully to outfit that other building to, you know, it would make sense then to be able to start working on some of those things specifically, you know, for the courthouse facilities, because otherwise that property is going to be sitting vacant once the register of deeds moves into the new building. So I think some of those things, if we could kind of make those a priority, certainly with the broadband, in what I understood from Mike's presentation, getting those applications or proposals out so that people could apply for the funding, I think would be important. And I think just in kind of the dollar amounts that were allocated for the different things, it kind of establishes maybe an informal priority of, of how we move forward.
And from a timing standpoint, like take broadband, for example, I think Mike mentioned it'd be sometime this summer before we may even have to write a check.
Sure.
They, they may need only the commitment probably here in March, but from a, to Tom's, Commissioner Coulson's point, you know, from a cash flow standpoint, we may be in good shape just by default. So on these direct, on these direct costs right now though, like courthouse, do we need to take any action today to, to let it go? I, I would, I think you're doing this today is the action. I think really from a, after today, an example like that would come back to you anyway because there's going to be contracts and there's going to be, you don't know this yet, but there's a couple of backroom finance things we're going to have to do to move the money to put into right pledge from an accounting standpoint. So a large percentage of these projects are going to come back to you from here until December 2024 in some capacity, whether the dollar amount changes or whether you just don't want to do it. I don't think anything is set in stone today anyway.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to move forward with what we have decided on?
Yes, and I would potentially suggest a motion that includes approval of the concepts within the spreadsheet that you have prepared with authority to move forward and bring back to you the, the steps needed on the immediate measures that have been discussed.
That is my motion.
Before, before we do that, do we want to have any placeholder for stormwater? Just because we haven't, and we've got a little bit left. And, and to Brian's point that if we're going to be thinking about stormwater and we're, we're also signaling something to the public when we do this, right? If it, I'm not saying that we need to, but leaving it blank, I think also says something. Just to countermeasure, one thing I, I had up here as an example, and I'm, I'm just thinking three steps ahead, our EMS folks, there's going to be some expenses that they're going to bring to you in April and May. And if I could knock some of that off and not have to look at that EMS tax, a wink and a nod, that would go a long ways. And this is equipment that they need that will probably be in use for the next 10 to 15 years.
Where would you put that on the spreadsheet, Brian?
Um, it's probably, it probably, it's probably going to fit probably neatly in the revenue replacement, but as a direct allocation, this is, this is their cardiac monitor. And with COVID being a respiratory cardiac thing, I think it kind of, it probably does tie into health and community without even more I think about it. So if you want to split that too that's left and.
Let's, let's do that.
That helps the whole county, yes.
Split that too that's left.
Split that too that's left within stormwater and then the, and then the direct allocation.
Another million will move in.
Okay. That would be my, my motion to accept the spreadsheet and to give you authority to move forward with what we, I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McAlhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
I, I commend you guys to, that's, that's a lot of money and a lot of eligibility and you did it in less than an hour, so that's commendable.
Because you prepped them all the way here.
Thank you for your correction.
Well, we got money. We need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Mr. Coulson, is that?
I was the second and we got much.
It's been moved and seconded.
What, what is that moved and seconded?
Adjourned.
Oh, okay, you want me to third?
We just need Kimberly to do the roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn? Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed, adjourned.